I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Committee in order. It is Monday, November 6, 2017. Time is 9:02. Everybody can stand for the plate.
(Inaudible) 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 First off, I'd like for everybody to remember everybody that was in Texas over the weekend, the 25 people that was killed and the others that was injured. If you could say a prayer for them, I would appreciate it. And also, the damage that we had to the city of Muncie and some of our surrounding counties, if you could also say a prayer for those people, I'd really appreciate it also. We'll move on to table business. Agreement for collection of personal property, I believe we're ready to move forward with this. Is that correct, John?
Yes. I'll make a motion when we remove it from the table.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
This is a matter that's been on the table for quite some time as the Treasurer and I have worked with the courts and worked on these agreements. There are two basic agreements. One for collection of taxes, over $300 personal property taxes. Those are for significant amounts. With McCollum and McClellan, Dot McCollum is the attorney. Another one is for those accounts less than $300, and I think it's ACS is handling those. I've reviewed the contracts, made revisions to satisfy the local court rules for those contracts. And both parties, both of the providers have agreed to those particular changes that we have. The Treasurer can address some more of that.
Hey, Carol, here, Treasurer. John did pretty good summarizing what's taking place. Essentially, I have two agreements. All parties have agreed to the terms of agreements. So, if you have any questions at this point, I guess I'll move any questions. We do have the agenda here. If you have any questions directly with them also.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah. Why don't you tell the public how much we have outstanding?
There's actually over $4 million of outstanding taxes due that we're trying to collect. So, that's the reason for the emergency. Try again, someone who would help us collect those taxes.
Appreciate you working on this.
Commissioners like to go ahead and vote on this?
I'll make a motion. We approve both agreements. Agreements for the collection of personal property taxes.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
You should have, or at least I think Denise has the original contracts with your signature.
Okay.
Next, we have Resolution 2017 dash zero forty, Resolution of Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, making a final determination of a tax sale certificate to be assigned to a nonprofit corporation. I don't believe they-
Commissioners, I don't see Beth Quarles here, who was-
I'm here for Beth.
Okay.
Yeah, she had Daily Apartments, you were-
Okay. All right.
Yes, Danny, you need your name, address.
Jared Quarles, I'm here for Daily Apartments, 1300 Bunch Boulevard, and Future Choices.
We had a public hearing on this at the last Commissioners' meeting on this resolution to transfer the tax sale certificate. Commissioner Quarles, if you could just tell the Commissioners about Future Choices, what you intend on doing with this property.
We're nonprofit here in town. We're having people with disabilities. We actually own Daily Apartments, which is adjacent to that property as well. We just want to acquire that to basically keep it maintained and, you know, up to code, whatever we need to do.
You understand that you're obtaining a tax sale certificate, which doesn't give you the property. You've got to do the things necessary to get it transferred into your name, get notice to the owners and people of interest, and then wait for redemption period, then apply for a tax deed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that's what didn't happen last time, so repeating this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would the Commissioners like to remove it from the table?
I'll make a motion when we remove it from the table.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2017 dash zero four zero.
Second.
Have a motion as second for approval. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our October 16, 2017 minutes for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next presentation to Commissioners, Cheryl Matthews, Director of Education and Client Services, Cancer Service of East Central Indiana.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Cheryl Matthews, I reside at 10612 North Fay Avenue, Muncie. I'm employed by Cancer Services of East Central Indiana, and I'm the Chair of the Tobacco-Free Coalition. And that's really why I'm here today, on behalf of the Coalition, to share information about the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout. The Great American Smokeout is a day observed every year, the Thursday before Thanksgiving. So, this year, it is Thursday, November 16. And the purpose really is to help and encourage people to either commit or recommit to living a healthier lifestyle through avoidance of tobacco. We know that tobacco use is the single largest preventable cause of disease and death in the United States. In Delaware County, the burden of tobacco is equal to, or in most cases, higher than the state of Indiana, and it's higher in every parameter to the United States as a whole. So, the Coalition really seeks to just improve the health of the community through education and support and advocacy, and just trying to help people stay off of or quit tobacco use. So, the Great American Smokeout is just a one-day observance, but its purpose is really to encourage people to start on a lifestyle that is free from tobacco. I did bring some information, both on the fact sheet for Delaware County regarding tobacco and the burden here in our county. And then I also brought some, a few posters, a toolkit to, if the Commissioners want to use any of the tools to promote the Day of the Smokeout, and some information about Indiana's quit line to help people who do want to quit smoking. So, I don't know if you want to pass these out or leave them at the table, or leave them over here. You know, Cheryl, about, oh, I don't know, three or four years ago, I thought, you know, now's the time for us to go smoke-free on our campus, any of our properties. You know, it'd be kind of neat, and I didn't say this to the gentleman, but wouldn't it be fun if we could just try one day, November 16, with no smoking on Delaware County-owned property? Wouldn't that be unique, to see that we could do it like Ball State did it, and IU Hospital did it? But I appreciate you coming today, and maybe we could have some good news for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Want to try it?
I'm not interested.
One day.
I think we'd have to do a ordinance or a resolution on that.
You can do a resolution, and the resolution actually is a statement of policy. You can do it in this meeting if you want. You could make a motion and second it and vote on it to make it for one day. Then I can put together paperwork for a one day afterwards, but you can get a statement of policy now if you want to. That's up to you guys.
I move that we try one day non-smoking or tobacco, November 16, 2017.
Just for one day?
One day.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
This is smoke and tobacco-free?
Yes, sir.
One day.
One day. Try it, you might like it.
Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
No.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will put together the formal resolution, but on November 16, 2017, according to the vote, the, all the facilities will be tobacco and smoke-free.
And that includes cars? True?
I thought it was just the facilities.
It was just the facility.
Okay, that's fine.
Now, if you want to-
Well, that's fine.
-push it a little bit more, I could change my vote.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to clarify it.
Okay, we'll move on. Kathy Vanice, Denise, with Ashton-Lanss surveyor.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Vanice. Easy name. I'm from Ashton-Lanss Surveyor at 325 West Washington. And what we have today is an administrative plat, can hear me better? It's an administrative plat that is dedicating part of County Road 400 South on the south end of the plat. It's about 195 feet by 25 feet of dedication to, of County Road 400 South on the south end of that plat.
Hey, this is just something that got overlooked.
It's a formality. Whenever we do an administrative plat, we dedicate the road right of way to the county.
And we just had a plat committee meeting last week to prove that.
Yes, yes. It has-
I'll move that we dedicate County Road 400 South.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, we have on ball Delaware County, purpose municipal bribery service, propose for the jail project. John, do you have this?
I do. I've had a chance to take a look at this agreement. This is to, I have a financial consultant for the work on financing for the jail. I didn't see anything in there that was improper or wasn't against the county.
So, the public understands, again, we received a letter from the Department of Corrections that we have to try to formulate some kind of plan within 180 days. Correct, John?
Yes, from August 31st.
Yep, so, these are just steps that we have to take. So, what would be the Commissioners-
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement with on ball.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Next, we have a customers agreement for the IT department. Yep?
Good morning. Jim Flood from the IT. What you have in front of you is a customer agreement from Lenovo. Lenovo is the equipment that we have downstairs for the servers. Back about three years ago, Lenovo bought out IBM. We've already got an agreement with IBM, and since the warranty of the equipment is expiring on the Lenovo equipment, to get on the maintenance agreement with them, we need to have a customer agreement with them on file.
Are you able to take a look at this as well? And it seems like a standard extension of the warranty agreement.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement with Lenovo.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have a Bridge 204 agreement for engineering services with Triad Associates Incorporated.
Morning Commissioners. This agreement is for the design and inspection of the bridge replacement. It's known as Bridge Number 204. It's located on County Road 200 West. It's in, you know, the county, Henry County line. Also, I want to share this is a project that we did receive community cost in Grand County for construction.
You just applied on a 22-foot bridge or not?
Um, I did not bring the measurement to the short span. So, it's a pretty simple bridge to fix and replace. We're looking at doing a steel package, so that will bring costs down.
120 days or?
Couple months, yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement with Triad Associates for Bridge 204.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to ordinances for first reading, Order 2017 dash zero twenty-nine, Delaware County Commissioners establishing the Veterans Affairs Donation Fund.
Morning Commissioners. Nate Jones, Delaware County Veterans Affairs. The reason I had asked this, or come to you guys to get this done, was we've got a lot of people in the community that are trying to help out, either homeless veterans or other veterans within the community that need that help, and the only way we can do this is by ordinance, so.
You'll need an ordinance to establish the fund to pay these donations, and this is a non-reverting fund for donations to the Veterans Affairs, so that they can spend the money once it's received, rather than going into the general fund.
Nate, my question is, once you make a donation, do you make it to a club, a circus club, or do you make it to the individual?
So, for example, like, we had a veteran that come in that was reestablishing, establishing housing for himself and was unable to pay a damage deposit. So, we would not take that money and give it to the actual veteran. We would pay the organization themselves if they meet the criteria, and then we're going to do with our office and set up all the criteria, but we wanted to do this first before we were with that firm.
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea. Nate and I have talked several times about when he goes out to outreach, he finds veterans in need of services, whether it's a roof repair or something, and I think this is a, I think that's a good thing. So, I'll make a motion. We introduce ordinance 2017 dash zero two-nine.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you. One last thing this week, thank you for that, whatever you do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next. Next, we'll move to resolutions. We have Resolution Number 2017 dash zero four-four, Resolution to assign tax sale certificates from Delaware County to the City of Muncie Redevelopment Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sam Bishop, Oil Elimination Program Administrator for the City of Muncie. I'm requesting approximately 10 tax sale certificates to be assigned to the Muncie Redevelopment Commission for demolition through the city's oil elimination program. This is an update. Over the past year, we've demolished approximately 75 properties through this program. On Wednesday, we're accepting bids for another about 55. I want us to keep moving forward.
How many of these properties have you put back on the tax roll?
We've approved approximately 10 side lot applications. Once we have the properties demolished, we notice all the adjacent property owners that property is for sale. So, we put about 20 or 25 out in our first kind of round of these applications, and we only received about 10 applications, so there's about 15 that are sitting there that, if an adjacent property owner would come forward at this point, then we could approve that, and that as we continue to demolish more, we will put more out. We also apply all the titles on the property to ensure that the new property owners don't have to deal with any past mortgages or any deeds that were unreported.
Is there a charge for them to apply to get the properties? Because I've heard there's a fee that they have to pay to get the properties.
Yeah, we have a small application fee. It's only $100, and that goes back into the program. So, any money that we collect would go to any future demolitions if that would accrue to enough, or could help pay additional balances. We're also, we'll be selling lots for new construction within the city of Muncie. We've only, we've already approved two to be transferred for new construction pending tax credit applications by some developers. We can have another about 30 properties that would see new construction.
So, we're giving you guys the lots, and you guys are selling the lots back? Is that what's going on?
The, in order to demolish the properties through the oil elimination program, we're required to, the Runcie Redevelopment Commission's required to have ownership for the properties, so we actually can't use our funds that we were awarded to demolish unless we own the property. And then, we have a small application fee, because we, just to ensure that the new owners are competent and willing to take on the lot, there's a lot of people, we have a thorough vetting process for our-
But I think what this question is, I understand what you're saying, but I think what this question is, is we transfer the properties over to the Muncie Redevelopment Commission for free, correct?
Correct.
And you guys have money coming from the state, correct, to demolish the properties?
Correct.
But then you are going to sell the property to a developer?
Yes, and that-
How much, I'm just wondering, how much are you selling these properties for?
Only, only around $100, $100 to $200. And like I said, all the money that's collected through that goes back into the program. So, I mean, if it accrues to enough, we could demolish a whole other property, or it could help pay some of the balances of-
Between the Muncie Redevelopment Commission and also the Muncie Sanitary District, do you have a number of how many properties that we have actually deeded to both areas?
Deeded or assigned.
Or assigned.
I can't speak for the Muncie Sanitary District. I believe it's been about 150 to Muncie Redevelopment Commission.
And out of those 150, how much are, how many of them are on the tax roll, on, back on the tax roll that have been demolished and given to adjacent property owners to put them back on the tax roll?
We've been able to do 10 so far.
So, you, we actually have 10 now that's back on the tax roll?
Yeah, and it's kind of a staggering process, because we kind of demolished the property first, and then we have the title quieted, and we use our attorney fees to apply the titles.
Excuse me, sir. Janet, could you answer some of these questions for us, please?
I believe John's got some questions to do.
I've got some answers to some of these questions.
Janet Kinsler, Tax Sale Deputy in the Auditor's Office.
Do you know how many properties we've given accurately?
207.
207 given to just the Redevelopment-
Muncie Redevelopment Commission.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with us giving them away, because at least they're going to try to do something. I just kind of wonder about the $100 fee. If they don't get the property, they don't get the $100 fee back?
Uh, no, it is a refundable fee.
It is a refundable.
Correct.
That's fine.
Correct. And like I said, the key purpose of that is just to make sure we have a good adjacent property owner. As, as we all know, there's a lot of poor property owners, so we thoroughly vet them to make sure that they're, they're going to be a responsible property owner. And I do have pictures of all the properties that are requested to be assigned, if you'd like to see the conditions of them.
So, out of 207, though, you've only put 10 back, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Is that, is that correct, Janet, as far as you know?
Well, we, we checked them last week, and there was none of them back on the tax rolls.
Right. I have found that there actually have been a total of 215 properties that have been transferred to the Redevelopment Commission since 2014. None of those have been placed back on the tax rolls. Matter of fact, there's a total of 62 that they've not even gotten a tax sale deed for. 62 of their, of their 215 properties that still exist in the name of the prior owner. A matter of fact, there was also one that the Commissioners deeded to the Redevelopment Commission in August of this year. That was actually a gift of a property that has not, the deed has not been created or recorded in the name of the Redevelopment Commission. The Sanitary District has gotten 31 properties, and the city of Muncie has gotten five different properties. So, a total of 251 properties have been provided to the city of Muncie Redevelopment Commission. And to the best of my knowledge, I can't find any of them that have ever been put back on the tax roll.
If I may, I'm not, I'm honestly not trying to provide incorrect information. There's, there's things in various procedures, and I know we've approved 10 applications. We might not have actually have transferred, but they are approved, and we're moving them forward. And like I said, I'm happy to show pictures of these properties. The city of Muncie, through its general funds, only has the opportunity to demolish about 10 to 15 properties a year. Meanwhile, we have approximately, probably still hundreds of properties that are truly in terrible condition and need demolition. And my main concern is that if these certificates aren't assigned, then we won't be able to obtain ownership, and they'll continue to sit there and deteriorate the neighborhoods.
And I think, Mr. Bishop, you've only been on the job a year or two.
Correct.
And being a property owner, I know that things do take time, and-
There were a number of delays in previous years, but like I said, within the past year, 75 properties have been demolished through this program, so we've seen significant increase in, in production.
Can you kind of give us an outlook by, maybe by June of next year, how many you might have back on the tax roll?
Yeah, so, a lot of it depends on whether there's an eligible adjacent property owner or if they're interested in the, in the side lot. We try to give, get as many to their hands as possible. Hopefully, by that time, we would have had, I don't know, say 150 properties demolished. Based on what I've seen, it seems about half of these properties have shown interest, and of those that we've already done, only about half of those have submitted applications. So, we should have, I mean, it could, it could vary, hopefully, at least 40. We try to give it, get as many to their hands as possible. They've been dealing with the properties for years and are more than willing to assume ownership and maintenance of those properties.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you have the number of properties we've given to the county's redevelopment?
To East Central Indiana, we've given a total of 20 parcels, and of those 20 parcels, 12 of them have been placed on the tax rolls in that, in just the two-year period of time, '16 and '17. The other parcels are tied up with objections that are in the process of being completed. I would anticipate they would be completed probably before the end of the year. So, you've got 12 out of 20.
In two years?
In just '16 and '17.
And we must add that those are properties that the roof was fairly well-established, and, you know, we had someone interested in them, so, and they do have a staff of, what, two or three people working on this, but-
Two people.
We appreciate Mr. Walters getting these back on the tax roll.
Well, I guess I'm not, I'm not willing to give any more properties until we, till we see some-
Some of the other properties that are actually put back on the tax roll.
Exactly.
Okay. How many approximately would you like to see back on the tax roll?
We got, we got to see something moving forward. I, I don't know, I'm not sure what's, I know things take time, but it seems like you've had a lot of time.
If the applications that have been approved to be transferred to adjacent property owners, if they are transferred, then it's about 10 or so, those are actually transferred and put back on the tax rolls, would that be a time that-
How many, because we're looking at overall 251 properties, I think John said 215 total. And how many, how many properties do you say you guys have demolished, like 75?
Yeah, we demolished approximately 75. And on Wednesday, we're accepting bids for another 50 more. And as we continue to apply the tax deeds for previously assigned tax sale certificates, then continuing to put those up to bid, we just can't really do much until we actually own the property.
And you've got 10 applications now?
That have been approved, correct.
To prove to go back on the tax roll, that...
Correct.
So do you know if you have anybody else interested in the other 65 properties that you guys have demolished? Or what would be the plans for the other 65 properties?
Yes, we do have interest. Mostly, we're waiting on the titles to be quieted. We want to make sure that the new property owners just don't have to deal with anything. I mean, there's always deeds that, people say that things were transferred years ago and never reported, so we don't want them to deal with any of that.
I'm just curious, John, does the county have an application fee?
No.
I believe Janet brings us up names of adjacent property owners, and we pull it out of a hat. They, but they have, do they have to pay like the B?
They have to pay $275, which goes for title search and notification costs, so it's all...
But we don't charge them a fee on top of that, correct?
No.
It's just reimbursed costs.
Right.
And, and we charge the application fee, but we don't charge for the other legal costs that we put into it.
Okay.
I'd like to see 30 or 40 give back, 40 give anymore.
But you have to remember, they are getting them torn down because of...
And I don't have, have a problem with that.
Well, I know.
But they still have properties that they have now that they can use that money to go forward and go ahead and demolish them instead of continuing to take properties.
How big a staff you have, Mr. Bishop?
I'm the, the primary staff person for this. I do work with our attorney with acquiring deeds and getting titles quieted, but what's happening there on, on the other staff?
I could table this until proof of at least a portion of these being placed back on the tax roll.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
I'll...
Do you have anything else, Andy?
Um, it could be, it can be removed from the table business since, because of the time requirements it takes to get us, the public notices put out and all of that. It would be, it'll be several months until, so I can...
We, we can leave it on the table until then.
Okay.
They can come back, that way we've got it, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
No.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution Number 2017-045, Resolution for Assignment of Tax Sale Certificates from Delaware County to Muncie Sanitary District.
Julie Behring, 3410 West Foxridge. This is in the Whitley. These are two of the ones in the Whitley area, in the floodway area.
Are these for demolish for...
Yes. All the ones in the Whitley area are for demolish.
For the...
Flood area.
For the flood area.
Uh huh, uh huh. We're wrapping up our purchasing of them by the end of the year, and the demo, we're doing inspections, which is really usually what our holdup is in tax sale stuff. And then they'll start the demo, hopefully early spring in that area.
And they actually settle on the river?
Well, they sit in the Whitley area, in the flood area, so yes.
And you do own nearly your...
No, I personally do not own them, but the, yes, the Muncie Sanitary District has them properly taken care of, yeah. I don't even own my own yard, but yeah.
But I really enjoyed going down the Whiter Street, seeing that area down there.
And we'll reach out to Beth and hopefully point her in the right area, since we're all in the same area with the tax sale stuff. Maybe we can show her how to, to maybe help take steps doing that.
She'll do maintenance for you.
Because it is, it is a long process, and if you've never done a quiet title, it's, it's a long process.
These properties won't be built on or sold over or anything?
No, they're in the flood area. Yeah, no, they're going to be. And then I know there's going to be a couple monuments erected over there, and then we're really kind of waiting to see what Whitley and the Sanitary District, what all we can amass, because this is a voluntary sale area, and then put together a project over there.
If these actually aren't on the river, they're just in the flood plain?
Right.
The revised flood plain from FEMA?
Right.
I move in off, Resolution 2017-045.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second. Anything else, Phil?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have Department Heads and elected officials. Lauren Paul.
Morning, Paul Singleton, Delaware County 911. What I have for you this morning is just some stats of the last 24 hours that came in through 911, so you can get an idea of the volume of calls that came in with the storm. Thank you.
By the stats, there's day shift, afternoon shift, and then midnight shift. So you see obviously that when the storm came in, the volume of calls jumped up. I just want to make you aware of that, that, that volume of calls on our end was, and the people we had working yesterday during the storm, they did a fantastic job getting that stuff in and getting it back out to the first responders.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Paul.
Let him know we said thanks.
I will.
I'll just touch on that. Our emergency management personnel, Jason Rogers and, and John Catino and their people are out doing damage assessments as we speak. And I know they were out quite a while yesterday afternoon, last night, and so we thank them also.
John, you had something?
Yes, with Paul up there, we've been in the process of negotiating some labor contracts, and we need to, the commissioners need to extend the current contracts for the sheriff's deputies, 911, and the jailers, because they expire on November 15th. We, I would recommend that you extend those to December 31st. We have still some more sessions to go. I'll get a formal agreement for us to get in there, but I would like to have the approval from the commissioners to extend it to December 31st. I make a motion to extend the contracts to December 31st.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Everybody received their report from Delaware County Ways and Majors?
Yes.
We'll move on to payment of claims. An amount of $1,324,288.88.
Second.
Have a motion and second, payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
If we don't have any questions or comments or anything from the public, motion to recess.
Second.
Motion second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.